The March 21st, 2023 meeting of the City Council of the City of Springfield, Illinois, called order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you. Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman DeCenso.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderwoman Connolly.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor Quormus present.
Thank you. Is there a motion to allow Alderman Fulgenzie to join the meeting?
No move. No move.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion passes. First item on the zoning agenda is docket number 2023-004 for the property located at 3600 Constitution Drive. Petitioner is S.J. Holmes, LLC. Present zoning classification is I-1 Light Industrial District, Section 155.040. Requested zoning relief of variance of Section 155.112, surfacing pavement red to allow the use of millings on the parking area instead of the solid dust-free surface required. Section 155.062, permitted obstructions in required yards to allow parking of automobiles in the required visibility triangle. Section 155.062(c)(1), permitted obstructions in a front yard to allow the drive lanes leading to parking spaces in a required front yard setback. Section 155.114(b), regulations for off-location of off-street parking facilities to allow parking in the required front yard setback facing cockerel. Section 155.480(k)(13)9, requirements, general standards, lighting requirement, I'm sorry, landscaping, screening, and lighting regulations, site and parking area lighting requirements, general standards, lighting requirements, to allow the use of wall pack lights which are not full cutoff styled fixtures, except on the north side of the north storage unit building, instead of fixtures heads which are full cutoff type. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval of the requested variances of Section 155.062, 155.062(c)(1), 155.114(b), and 155.480(k)(13)9, as proposed in the petition. Recommended approval of the requested variance to Section 155.112 for a period not to exceed two years. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff with an understanding that the surface has a two-year life. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion. We accept the, we approve as submitted.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve as submitted. Is that with or without the two year?
That's without. It's as submitted.
Okay. And seconded, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
Alderman Fulgenzie, how do you vote?
Thank you.
Aye.
And the zoning request passes as submitted, 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2023-006 for the property located at 2725 West Monroe Street. Petitioner is Lamar Company, LLC. Present zoning classification S2 Community Shopping and Office District, Section 155.031. Requested zoning relief is in the zoning petition and is to permit an off-premise advertising sign with two sign faces on the subject real estate. There is currently a sign in place, and this will allow conversion to a digital sign. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is denial as submitted, but approval of the alternative relief suggested in the petition with the following conditions. Number one, the height, dimensions, and signed area of the proposed sign faces, limited to no more than two faces total, shall not exceed 40 feet in height and 10 and a half feet tall by 36 feet, with an area not to exceed 378 square feet. Condition number two, the electronic display faces will display messages that do not change more frequently than the set of eight to 10-second cycle mentioned in paragraph number eight of petition. And number three, messages displayed shall be static images that do not include moving, scrolling, blinking, flashing, or animated graphics. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the recommendation of the regional planning staff. But do we have someone from the company here?
Okay.
My understanding is that they were, they were fine with those conditions.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Been moved and seconded to accept the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. And second, discussion?
We're happy to accept the conditions that were imposed by the Regional Planning Commission and by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Your billboards have been used. I mean, this is, this is similar to ones that are in, the ones already in Ward Eight. I would just like to say, this company has allowed for police recruiting advertisements to be used, fire department recruiting. They included an ad for Wouldn't It Be Lovely as part of the public outreach, so I really appreciate the work that you've done to be a part of the community and promote city events and not-for-profit events, too. So, thank you, thank you very much for that.
Lamar's happy to do it and assist, and we have had great success with the two billboards that are already in the city, the one at the corner of Jefferson and Walnut and the one in your ward, Alderwoman, on Chatham Road.
Yeah, and I've gotten no complaints from the advertising that you do there. So, thank you very much for agreeing to the modifications.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yeah.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, thank you. I did, I did want to mention that, that I think we ought to look into changing some of our zoning rules for, for these lighted signs, so that they don't have to come through. We've had a lot of, you know, I don't, I can't think of one that's been stopped, and I haven't had any complaints about any. So, I just think we kind of need to look and see what other cities are doing, so that we can maybe get up to, you know, the current century, and, and maybe it'll save a lot of people some work. So, I'd like to see that happen here in the future, so.
Yeah, we'll take a look at the parameters that were put in this and use that as a footprint, but check with other cities as well.
Just, it saves, saves the company.
Right.
It also saves our zoning. We've got enough, enough work, I think, so I just think that would be, it's time to kind of look at the whole sign, the zoning on signs and that, and kind of update them.
I would work with you on that if you want to.
So.
Sounds good. So, Alderwoman Connolly and Alderman Hanauer will help with the, that initiative?
I've gotten no complaints, and again, the fact that they allow for other not-for-profit advertising, which has been really impactful. I appreciate it a lot. You've been a good, good partner with the, the community.
Yep, we'll come up with those recommendations.
Yeah.
And Chair, Alderman Donlin wants in on that, or you have a question?
No, I just have a question. I know it's, it's the 2725 West Monroe. Alderwoman, where specifically is that located? I have trouble in my mind figuring out where that is without Google Maps.
Without a Google.
Or, Mr. Hamilton?
It's at the corner of Monroe and Veterans.
Monroe and Veterans, okay. And, and I know the next one is, where is it on Wabash?
Yeah, the petition that's coming up next on the agenda is on Wabash. It's at the corner of Chatham and Wabash, in the Shell Station parking lot next to Dublin Pub.
Look, same kind of...
It's the same sort of deal, except here...
You need to jump ahead, Mayor.
That's right. That's good.
Just briefly, the difference between the two is, this particular one, both sign faces will become electronic. The one on Wabash, only the west-facing sign face will become electronic. The east-facing sign face will be eliminated completely, like the Walnut and Jefferson sign.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hamilton.
And this is the one that's closest to Monroe, right? Because there's a whole bunch of, that was where I was blanking, and I'm like, I can't remember if there's one between. Thank you.
Very good. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the ordinance, or I'm sorry, the zoning, that was recommended by Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
Alderman Fulgenzie, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And the zoning request passes, nine voting yes, none voting no, and one voting present. Final item on the zoning agenda is docket number 2023-007 for the property located at 1801 Wabash Avenue. Petitioner is the Lamar Company, LLC. Present zoning classification is B1 Highway Business Services District, Section 155.033. Requested zoning relief is in, in the zoning petition and is to permit an off-premise advertising sign with one face, sign face, on the subject real estate. There is currently a sign in place with two sign faces. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval of the requested conditional permitted uses, provided that, number one, the height, dimensions, and sign area of the proposed sign face facing west shall not exceed 40 feet in height and 10 and a half feet tall by 36 feet, with an area not to exceed 378 square feet. Number two, the sign shall utilize an appropriate technology such as, but not limited to, that prescribed in paragraph number nine of the petition, that limits brightness at night, directs light only in specified directions, and limits the area in which the display can be viewed to the satisfaction of the zoning administrator. Number three, the electronic display sign will display messages that do not change more frequently than the seven, or I'm sorry, eight to 10-second cycle mentioned in paragraph eight of the petition. And number four, messages displayed shall be static images that do not include moving, scrolling, blinking, flashing, or animated graphics. And number five, the east sign face shall be removed as described in paragraph eight of the petition. The petitioner intends to replace the west-facing sign face with a digital billboard while removing the east-facing sign. Recommended approval of the requested variances. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, this petition is a quality company. They do good work, and they've reached out, and they have made accommodations for, towards safety. It's just a one-way facing sign, not facing east and west, and they've tried to accommodate the residential neighborhoods with new, more recent technology that can direct the light in various ways to prevent residential neighbors from being impacted as greatly. I've always, I have a mostly consistent voting record of being against these illuminated signs that can change every eight seconds at intersections, and we did successfully push back on Simon Properties about 10 years ago, when they wished to have a sign at the corner of, of Wabash and Route 4, one of our highest density accident areas in our city, and they did not put up that sign there. This is close to another, and I'm getting to the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
This is close to another high-traffic accident area at the corner of Chatham Road and Wabash, and so I'm going to stick with my historical voting pattern and not be a yes vote on this. But to save time, this council tends to go along with these requests for these kinds of illuminated digital signs that can change eight to 10 seconds, so I'm not going to waste the council's time if somebody wants to make a motion on this or hold it for the next alderman that sits in this chair when they get here, but either way, it's fine with me. So, if another alderman wants to make a motion on this...
Now, Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation.
Second.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Your yes, Alderman Williams?
Yeah.
Alderwoman DeCenso?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's right. And the zoning request passes, eight voting yes, one voting no, and none voting present. Or, I'm sorry, nine voting yes, one voting no. And that concludes the zoning portion of our meeting. This time, the Chair recognizes Treasurer Buscher for the presentation of the financial report.
Thank you, Mayor Langfelder. The corporate fund had a beginning balance in the month of February of $64,164,513. We took in total receipts of $17,701,131. We had total disbursements in the month of February of $11,433,370, which left the corporate fund with an ending balance of $70,432,274. Of that ending balance, the ARPA fund balance remaining, Mayor Langfelder, is $22,151,813. This concludes my report, Mayor Langfelder.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, discussion?
McMiniman?
So, this is another outstanding report from our treasurer showing the highest balance in our city's history. And I just, last, two weeks ago, I talked about what the situation was 10 years ago, where we had minimal cash balances in the two to four million dollar range. I just want to go back two years earlier. What we, what I passed out to the alderman, and I think the media representatives and our treasurer and so forth, is what we faced 10, 12 years ago, 12 years ago. So, if you look at that document that now Alderman Williams has and Alderman Gregory has, it shows that we were in negative balance 12 years ago, and that kind of shows the progress we've made, not just negative balance, but big-time negative balance, so that in April of 2010, we had a negative 20, a negative $10 million cash balance. So, how did we pay our bills back then? Well, we had lines of credit with our local banks to make payroll and that kind of thing. So, it just shows where we've come from and where we are now, and how bad it used to be. So, we're in a good position now. You know, when Mayor Houston came in, he had this mess on his hands. He basically said the city was in, in effect, insolvent, and our utility was in the same kind of bad shape. We were, what they call, in default of our bonds because we had to have a certain level of cash available for our bondholders, and so it was a mess back then. And, you know, how did we get into such a mess? There are plenty, plenty of reasons for that, but one of the reasons was that we had, back then, our then-mayor Dablin had entered into five-year contracts with our police and fire, paying 4% a year for five years. That's on a compounded basis, that was $22 million, 22% raise over the course of those five years. So, what happened was, when we went into a recession, sales tax dropped, but the payroll increases continued at the rate of 4% a year, and we tried to negotiate with police and fire back then, but they were unwilling to change their pay increases, even though for two years, inflation was negative. It was negative. So, we have to be careful going forward. It's been an honor to serve 12 years, and, you know, back then, when I came on the council, I'd been wearing the uniform for 30 years. So, my thought was, okay, you know, we want to respect our police and fire, and we do greatly, but I thought I was, because I wore the uniform, I could speak out. So, I always wanted to fund the police and fire pension funds, but at the same time, back then, we had terrible abuses going on with our pension funds. By terrible abuses, I mean there was significant spiking taking place. And by spiking, I mean, it wasn't just that the collective bargaining agreements had worded in that every, once a year on your anniversary date or your birthday, your pay increased 5%. And so, that was good enough for the union members, just to get a pay increase. But what happened was, they coupled on top of that, they went to the Illinois Department of Insurance and asked the Illinois Department of Insurance to interpret that, that 5% pay increase as impacting their pension, so that if they retired on the, during the period of time when that spike was taking place, their pension would be increased by 5%. Why does that happen? Because under the state statutes, your final rate of pay for police and fire is what controls your pension calculation. It's not like in the military where you got to be in, you know, they average out the last five years of your pay and come up with an average amount, or schoolteachers, or others. With, with police and fire, it's just your last, you get a promotion on your last day of pay, that's what the, they use to calculate your pension. So, then, when I came into office, you know, that was one of the reasons I, that was one of the reasons I ran for office. We got it, this is wrong. It's abusive. It's improper. And so, we went to the Department of Insurance, and they then reversed their letter ruling that granted the interpretation that a temporary pay increase impacts your, quote, "final rate of pay." They reversed that ruling. And then, in digging through the administrative files, we found out that even though the collective bargaining agreement said that that applies to union members, guess what? Former mayors, including Mayor Karen Hossara, had issued a ruling, a executive order that said, "We'll give a pay spike to the white shirts, the executive officers of police and fire." So, they were getting it. Well, ultimately, we're, about, you know, 11 years ago, we were able to reverse those incorrect rulings, but guess what? Once you are given a pension, even if it was incorrectly calculated, you can't reverse it. So, that's why, in a lot of ways, I think the last time I counted, we've got over, we have over, I think it's 50 retired police and fire now that are making over $100,000 a year with their pension. And interestingly enough, the very first of the police and fire individuals that retired from city government to get over the $100,000 mark was Mr., former Police Chief Caldwell, and he was working for, some of you that have been reading the SJR forever remember this, he got an 8% spike right before he left office from a mayor that at the time was waving the flag, you know, "We got to turn around these pension abuses." So, basically, I'm saying, you know, be careful when elected officials get too close to police and fire. Be careful. And so...
Paid for by...
That's right, because these are last words, and thank you for paying attention. Thanks a lot.
Any other discussion?
No.
Is there a motion to approve the treasurer's report?
No move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the March 7th, 2023 regular City Council meeting and approve the minutes.
So, moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
John, can you please...
Just mute it.
Can you please put it on mute, John?
Oh, you put it on mute. Can you put yours on mute?
You could, you could still hear him with us on mute.
Good. Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances in the record of the City Council meeting.
No move. Second.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this City Council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
No move, Mayor. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
John?
It's like Yankee Stadium.
Thank you, John. And the consent agenda passes, 10 voting yes, none voting no. Agenda number 2022-384, 2022-463, 2023-001 remain table during committee. Is there any action on any of those?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Alderman McMiniman?
I think we've got one ordinance on debate that has to do with lien, treatment of utility liens, and what, who has authority to adjust the collectible amount. I think it's a really good ordinance. I mean, it's, it's very limited in scope. It's really just speaking to the fact where we have a notice of lien filed with the county recorder. In what instances can that particular notice of lien move towards a settlement of the amount? I think it's a good, strong ordinance, but I think because we're holding another ordinance that has to do with Wyndham, and, and there may be some discussion back and forth regarding the debt that Wyndham was able to receive, that we ought to hold this ordinance that Alderman Gregory and I and Mr. Mayor you brought to the council for consideration. So, what's the number of that ordinance? I don't have it opened up.
It is 2023-055.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded to hold Agenda number 2023-005. And second, any discussion?
It's 055, Mayor.
Yeah.
Oh, 055, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Is there a motion to hold Agenda number 2023-069 and Agenda number 2023-070? We have to publish those. Is that correct?
No move.
Just very quickly, these are both annexation matters. Because of the timing of the notices, the published notices, we do need to wait until the next meeting, if you wouldn't mind.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 2023-082, an ordinance approving the appointment of Brandon Cole to the Springfield Community Relations Commission. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda number 2023-082 on final passage.
No move, Mayor.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion? If you'd like to introduce yourself, we'd appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Brandon Cool. I have been a resident of the Central Illinois Springfield community for well over 20 years. I have a bachelor's degree in political science, master's in public administration, certification in nonprofit management, and I've been with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Illinois for roughly 10 years. So, I've served in various roles and capacities there, from operations to our government relations space to help kind of foster and develop policy. Most recently, I've been in technology management and strategic planning. So, that's a little bit about my, my professional or educational experience. I've, I've served in, or I'm, I'm sorry, I've, I've participated in various nonprofit-sponsored, you know, events and, and community relations activities. So, I'm very passionate about that. Did you have any other questions for...
Any questions for Brandon?
Thank you.
Alderman Gregory?
I just, it's really not a question. I just, you know, our community relations team is, is really a, it's really the first touching point for people in need, a lot of the times. You know, a lot of people call us, and we get them to Juan, and Juan does a fabulous job of coordinating, and his team as well, of coordinating those services, and that's really important in our community. And, and that's something you look forward to, really getting out of the community. I know Juan, sometime, I met him years ago jogging throughout our community. So, you know, he does a lot of that, and, you know, I, I just want to make sure you prepare for that.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm, I'm very passionate about that work. I mean, the thing that drew me to this commission in particular is, you know, as a child, I, my family, we experienced a house fire, and we lost everything. So, I, I saw this community kind of rally around our family, and this was, you know, a bunch of strangers, and they had no obligation to help us, right? And I, it really, like, ignited some passion in me as it pertains to public service motivation, and it's something that I've always been, you know, very passionate about throughout my life, and I, I don't plan on that ever going away. So, yes, I'm very much up for any obligations that the commission would have.
Thank you. I appreciate you. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Thank you. All in favor, the ordinance vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
Alderman Fulgenzie, how do you vote? No, he's on there. I think he's muted on his end.
And the ordinance passes, nine voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is 2023-086, an ordinance... Next item on the agenda is twenty twenty-three dash zero eight six, an ordinance authorizing execution of the redevelopment agreement with Tower Capital Group. Is there gonna be a?
Motion to.
Been motion to hold?
Yes, I'm doing a motion to hold and to also ask to hold conversations until our growth alliance can come in and speak about it. They're doing some more research right now.
Okay. Moving in second to hold for next meeting. In second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is document number twenty twenty-three dash zero nine zero, an ordinance authorizing execution of a contract number FD twenty-three dash zero nine dash five nine with multiple vendors for construction of three new firehouses for a total amount not to exceed twenty million, seven hundred eighty-seven thousand, two hundred sixty-three dollars for the Springfield Fire Department. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number twenty twenty-three dash zero nine zero on final passage.
So moved. Second.
Been moved in second. Chair will entertain a motion to accept the proposed amendment number one.
So moved. Second.
Do you want to go over that, Counselor?
Yes, this this is an amendment that was offered or recommended by OBM and this is to fund the difference between the budgeted amount and the ultimate amount the bids came in using a fund balance and again provided by OBM as far as to make certain that the correct accounts were accounted for. But the amendment adds additional funding as a supplemental in order to cover the cost of construction.
Any discussion on the amendment?
What's the additional supplemental amount?
The total amount is three point four million. It is, there's a copy of that with the detail of it, but that's to cover both the construction and the construction management. In other words, the entire project from the original budgeted amount.
Any other questions on the amendment? Alderwoman Conley?
Actually, Alderman Redpath was in there first.
Yeah, he's has a question.
My question's to the ordinance. I'll wait till it's amended.
I'm just, I guess, yeah, my question is three point four million dollars. Why is this coming up today? I I don't understand why it's come by the, I just don't know why this amount came up so late in the process.
Director McCarty?
Can you hear, is this working?
We got you.
We budgeted nineteen million dollars, which is what we felt was the preliminary estimate and cost from our architecture firm to do the construction. The bids came in higher.
When did the bids come in?
The bids came in a week, a couple of weeks ago, maybe? Two, three weeks ago, I think it was.
So.
So when we got the bids, we had to put forth the contracts for passage and at the same time realized it was going to cost more, so we had to do a supplemental along with it.
Okay.
So as soon as we found out, we started the process of doing the supplemental.
Okay, thank you.
By way of just information, the, excuse me, the bid info, I apologize, Mayor. The bid information is attached to the ordinance. So you'll, as as normally happens with the bidding process, you'll see the bid sheets, who bid and low bids and so on. So it's gone through the normal process with our both recommendations via OSHA, but also with the specifications committee through the purchasing agent and so on. So it's gone through our normal screening with the grid. It's a little different situation because of the way the bidding has occurred. Because we have a construction manager, it's not in the form of a general. So that's why you're seeing multiple different bids instead of just one bid of a gross amount, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that makes sense. And I apologize, I wasn't here to ask other questions last week, but, no, I mean, I obviously I'm excited to see these move forward. I just wanted to understand the additional amount. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the amendment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Amendment passes. All those, is there a motion to approve the ordinance as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. Discussion, Alderman Repath?
Yes, sir. Mayor, I got a letter from a guy who made a bid on the concrete contract. His name is, it's from Hard Surfacing, Inc. He said he was disqualified from the bid process because he did not own a commercial building. Is that part of the requirements to be able to bid?
Yep. Here comes Dan Long, the purchasing agent.
Thank you, yes, Dan Long, acting person, the agent. It's Hard Surfacing bid on the on bid package, twenty-seven hundred site improvements and their bid was one million, seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And Kenny Construction's bid was one million, seven hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. It was a pretty robust bidding process. Both vendors appear to be entitled to a local preference in the contract award under section thirty-eight forty-five of the purchasing code. But when we looked at it, Hard Surfacing's address is thirty North Cotton Hill Lane, Springfield, Illinois. That is not a commercial address, that's a residential address. And under the purchasing code, to qualify as a local preference, you're required to, a vendor's required to own or lease all or portion of a commercial building for a period of not less than twelve consecutive months prior to the submission of a bid.
So.
So I called Mr. Clem and spoke with him and and clearly the the property where he operates, this this company is out of his home and it's a definitely a residential property. And and I asked him about, well, where does he keep his equipment? And he told me he has a commercial facility in Decatur and that and that he'd been trying to sell that and hadn't had any luck in doing that. And then later on, then after the bids were awarded, he he claimed that he had a rented some small facility here as well. But at that point.
So it it isn't our rules that they have to have?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, in fact, I can read it to you real quick.
That's all I needed to know, Dan.
Okay.
And Alderman, real quick, if I could help you on that, you may recall the the local bidding preference has been in Springfield's code for for decades. And one of the original concerns was you you did want a business to have an actual operation in the city, not simply like a P.O. box or a house. And that's the reason that there is specification about it should be a commercial.
I agree with that. I I just want to get clarification on that.
Yep, understood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So what, yeah, so they didn't get the five percent. Kenny Contractors got the five percent. It was such a close bid, that's why they rewarded the contractor.
Thank you.
So if he establishes a new commercial building, he'll be he'll be within compliance of of our ordinance, correct?
Twelve months.
Yeah, yeah, he's asked after twelve.
Not for this bid, for future bids.
Yeah, this bid's kind of done.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And Stan.
Any other discussion on the ordinance as amended? All those in favor of the ordinance as amended, vote yes, those opposed vote no. Voting is now open.
Alderman Fulginsy, how do you vote?
Yes.
And the ordinance passes ten voting yes as amended, ten voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is document number twenty twenty-three dash zero nine one, an ordinance authorizing execution of contract RFP PW twenty-three dash thirty-six with Sightscapes, Inc. for the purchase of trash and recycling receptacles for downtown beautification in an amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number twenty twenty-three dash zero nine one on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion?
Yes, I got a question.
Oh, whoa, whoa, whoa.
Well, first of all, I want to thank everybody for allowing me to to vent the last time when we were talking about twenty-five hundred dollar garbage cans. It seems like we've got them down a little bit. I was just gonna ask what the total cost per can was. I, you know, off the twenty-four ninety-nine.
Oh, yeah, one thousand, one hundred and seven dollars.
Good job, Nate. We saved half.
Job, Nate?
Saved half.
Are they the same size?
They're approximately the same size and it's a similar company that's been utilized and is recommended as an alternative, similar to the the cans that we have at this time.
Think that the citizens will enjoy those cans just as much as they would have the twenty-four hundred. Thank you. Two seventeen hundred.
Alderman Williams.
Oh, yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna vote against this and and I'm gonna tell you why I feel we shouldn't be doing this. This council voted against broadband, which is very important for my ward and my community. But we want to buy trash cans. This council voted against a summer youth program to employ these summer youth to to cut these lots, to maintain these yards and lots and do things like this, but we want to buy garbage cans. I'm for the beautification of downtown. Actually, I don't think downtown is that in that bad of a shape. It's not like we don't have any garbage cans. And I just think if we can't afford to give poor kids broadband services and work on giving residents who don't have broadband services and we can't afford to you to give our kids opportunities in the summer because we see help wanted signs for adults and for older workers who won't be cutting the grass and maintaining these lots, then we shouldn't be doing stuff like this with the money. Because we have garbage cans. So I'll be voting no on this. Thank you.
Alderman Gregory?
I would echo that, you know, in my heart and my mind, I just, you know, I just couldn't vote for this. I'm all for these type of things, but, you know, the the these are pressing issues in our community and, you know, we have to stand firm in these choices. So I I have to vote no against this. Thank you.
Alderman McMinima?
I understand those points of views. I think we're trying to do everything in in all areas, you know, with the broadband. I think we've still got lots of money in city WLP for broadband in addition to the five hundred and a half million that this council appropriated. We are the downtown capital. Beautification is important and I've seen the existing cans in heavy winds, they're lying flat on the ground, garbage coming out of them. And so I think one of the goals with this upgrade of our trash cans is to add some weight to those cans so that they can't blow in the heavy winds and just keep our downtown looking good and, you know, have a a place with a state capital. And we want to have a really a beautiful downtown for those that come from miles away to see international and national and in-state visitors that come to see our our capital. So I understand those points of views, but I think we got enough money to do to do the broadband and and the beautification downtown.
Alderman Williams?
Yes, so, you know, downtown is important, but my ward is important. Maintaining those lots are important. Employing these kids during the summer is very important. And I I just feel like our our priorities are mixed up here. Yes, we got a little broadband money after it being denied. It's less than what we would have got, but we did get some and I and I'll I'll give you credit, but you're the Alderman who's who's saying, oh, look at the record number, look how good, look how much money. We could have did it all. We could have did broadband. We could have did a summer program for the youth and we could have did the garbage cans. But we make these priorities and we vote against stuff for whatever reason that that don't make sense to the communities out there. But then we're gonna come back and say, oh, but by the way, we're gonna have some pretty garbage cans to match the benches or or whatever we're doing here. Like I said, I think it is important to have a nice downtown, but we need to learn how to prioritize things and this shouldn't go until we fix some of the human things, the things that are going to impact the kids' lives and people's lives. A garbage can sits on a sidewalk or a corner or whatever and it may look nice, but it's not taking care of the things like human beings having a job during the summer or the lots being looking nice. They need to look nice too. Thank you.
Alderman McMinima?
Again, I I understand those points of view. I think the last time we changed the garbage cans was twenty years ago. So so it's not like twenty, it's not a hundred and fifty thousand dollars every year. It's it's more like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars spread over ten years, that's fifteen thousand dollars a year. Spread it over twenty years, it's it's more like, you know, half of that. So it's it's a one-time expense that that we won't have to face every year. But I understand your point of view, Ms. Mr. Williams.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes, those opposed vote no. The voting is now open.
Alderman Fulginsy, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. And the ordinance passes eight voting yes, two voting no. Next item on the agenda is document number twenty twenty-three dash zero nine four, an ordinance accepting an agreement with Glashere Sands Windpower LLC for the purchase of all available MISO accredited capacity for five years in an amount not to exceed twelve million, five, seven hundred and seventy-one thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars for the Office of Public Utilities. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number twenty twenty-three dash zero nine four on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? Alderman Hanauer?
Yes, sir. I just, I want to make sure that we have the ability to get out of this contract if it doesn't become feasible. We don't want to get caught in another win contract debacle like we had when we first, when I first started here.
Yeah, Scott Rogers, I think.
I just want to make sure that that was part of the contract, that we can, we have an out.
Yeah, if you had to explain the capacity in the contract, please.
Yeah, this is for capacity purchase, not win purchase, like the the wind power contract we had before. There is no out clause in this contract. What it is, it's it's a five-year guaranteed, six years optional. Currently, the first year is seven dollars a kilowatt month is the way they price it. Current market, what we're seeing in in, so let me back up. Currently, this is a new accreditation market for MISO this year. We used to buy capacity or sell capacity when we had excess generation, a year-long time. Now they've done seasonal blocks, so they went into four blocks, three months at a piece for seasonal accreditation. This is an unknown market. What we're seeing in a market today, we can't buy capacity on an open market like we used to right now, primarily because of the change of this market. So what they're doing is the companies that have excess because of some of the new rules are sitting on that capacity because they don't know what's gonna happen. So seven dollars currently is below market value. The cost new entry last year was seven twenty, seven dollars and twenty cents a kilowatt month. Cost new entry this year is eight dollars and fifty-two. We've got the first year of this at seven dollars, the second year at six. The last three years is at three dollars and sixty-five cents a kilowatt month. If you look in our footprint in MISO, especially Zone Four, which is Southern Illinois, the addition of generation is minimal. So there is going to be no additional generation and so the capacity has to cover all the load in Southern Illinois. So there is, in the short term, even in four or five years, with the exception of Lake Island Energy, if that ever gets built, there is no new generation in Illinois. So this capacity market is probably gonna get more volatile as the time goes on.
I still am concerned about about getting stuck in a contract that we, if things go, would happen to drop and we're paying more than what, you know, we're in the same business that that when when we all came in, when a lot of us came in, and I remember walking door to door back then and we were getting our butts kicked by people about the win contracts. And it took us a long time. It took, I think, almost through the first term to get out of those win contracts. And I just, I I mean, I I understand why we got to do it, you know?
I'll say the one difference in this is it's five years and the worst that it costs is is the total dollar amount up on for the amendment. It would never cost us more.
What was it? Let's see.
The amended amount was fourteen, I don't remember the, oh, when I got it.
I believe that added that sixth year. Yeah.
Yeah, the the with the sixth year, the amended amount is fourteen million, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand.
Go ahead, Corv.
I was gonna say.
Pull your mic closer, please.
This is, this is one of those circumstances, the federal regulations, state regulations require the city to, as a utility, to cover its peak load plus a percentage. And the circumstance is that because there's been so many coal units closed, that has caused the availability of coverage to drop. And what you're seeing is an exact indication, not four years ago, five year, four years ago, I think, at the capacity market was sixty cents.
ago, I think, at the capacity market was 60 cents. Now we're at $7 for the same thing. And so what you're really doing by this, uh, and it is a judgment call, Alderman, uh, Hanauer is exactly correct.
Seven?
This is a, um, judgment call because what you're really doing is buying price certainty because it could drop, but if it goes up two or three or four dollars, um, because we're forced to buy it, we are forced to buy it, then you might have a scenario where instead of 14 million over six years, it might be 20 million. So what you're buying in this whole situation is price certainty. Now, if it goes down, then we've overpaid. If it goes up, we've saved significantly. So it is without a question, a judgment call. And T has issued a memorandum or a sort of recommendation that the Energy Authority recommending, based on the, uh, the, how volatility of the market, we are probably well advised to try to get price certainty, meaning these, it won't be higher than this. But is it possible it might go lower? Yes. But they believe, T has advised, that it's much more likely it'll be higher than it is lower these numbers. The only reason that they're able to get this, this is a wind farm that is, uh, I believe in the Lincoln area, is that correct, north of us?
Correct.
They're directly or indirectly owned by Microsoft. They've already sold all their energy, they've sold all their racks. And so the only thing, the only piece they have left of their three, their, their three components of, uh, revenue is the capacity. T has a relationship with them that has allowed the utility to have a little bit of an inside, uh, uh, situation because they're just as likely to say, if you don't want to do it, fine, we'll go on the market, we may make twice as much. So this is a judgment call without a question. And it is, the question is, is it a matter of price certainty? Or do you want to, or is everybody comfortable taking a risk?
And to add, to add to that real quick, Alderman, currently, as I said, currently, the cost new entry comes in at, at what they've projected, the independent market monitors projected $8.52 a kilowatt month. So it's, if we go into the market, we take that risk also of that first year being at $8.52. So which, which is about a $2 million impact just this year.
So this guarantees that if we, if we need power to fill our peak, we have it.
This, this.
And it's not necessarily coming from this wind farm, right? It just, it's coming from the grid still.
Correct. Now, this does not necessarily guarantee energy, which is, which you're talking about, the rolling blackouts that we were talking about, is that what you're referencing? This doesn't necessarily guarantee that, but what it does is, is it protects us from, or it protects, it's a requirement we have with MISO that we have to have capacity to cover our native load. Every entity does. And, and that's how they try to guarantee that.
But if this, if we need the power and they're not, they're not spinning, they're not generating, what happens?
Yeah, if, if they're not generating, that is completely independent of the, it's completely independent, it's two separate entities of.
Right, thank you.
Energy versus capacity.
Right, right, got you. The purpose of the capacity very quickly is, MISO uses it, the, the, the national economy uses it as an incentive to build power plants.
Right.
You get paid for that power plant if it's not producing because it has the capacity. So it's like a standby charge.
Yes.
And every utility is required to pay for it.
Right.
And so we're caught up in this whole situation. So the question becomes price certainty versus do you want to roll the dice and, you know, it might be higher, it might be lower, but if it's higher, it could be significantly higher. So, and T, in managing, just, just to put it in perspective, when you're managing the utilities, they always recommend price certainty, meaning you're not going to be subject to it might double.
Right.
And that, that's kind of what the issue is. And, uh, it's just a, a strange situation because they've already celled off their other revenue streams. So the city's not, uh, participating in that at all. It's purely the capacity, and even then, the capacity is variable because they come up with a new formula on how to rate wind farms or solar for how they're going to allow capacity credits.
That's right. And, and that's part of the reason there's a 5% just for that variability year to year of the wind farm capacity that MISO credits them.
Alderman Redpath?
You know, I've always been against any contract that goes five years. It's a, it's, it's always a gamble. Uh, but, you know, in this circumstance, our whole, our whole way about doing business, the utilities changed since we have one coal plant now. This, this, uh, this contract here, and I agree, is, um, is, um, is a, is a good option for us. It's going to keep our price, and certainty is exactly the right word. It gives us the opportunity to make sure that we do. It's no different than how we negotiate our coal contracts. And if you remember, one of the, one of the most historical things that we did under this council and, uh, the previous council and this council was lock in that coal price as low as we possibly can. This is what we're doing here. So I would encourage the council to support this. I think it's the right move. Thank you.
And just one more thing to add to that. There, with the, being four seasons, there are seasons where currently with what we're projected to get for Unit 4 and Interstate and our combustion turbines and this, this agreement, taking all of their capacity, we'll have a little excess capacity in the winter months. And currently, MISO is looking worse in the winter months than it is in the summer because of all the wind and solar. There's less wind and solar there, but this, this will give us enough that we could actually sell into the market and actually make some profit off of it potentially.
If, if the price is higher.
If the price is higher.
Then we could actually, almost like an arbitrage, where you're making a higher rate.
Correct.
For something you've bought at a lower rate.
So the other option, the other flexibility that gives us, what they're changing rules, if we decide to take an outage and it's more than 30 days in a season, we have to replace that capacity. And, and so the, what I got, got to was talking about earlier with companies that are not putting all their capacity in the market, that's what they're doing. Because of the uncertainty in it, they're holding some of that capacity back this year because of some of the uncertainty of the new rules. So this will kind of give us a little bit of buffer there too in the winter.
Alderman Donlin?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, just a couple of comments and a que, a couple of questions. Our expert, which is the Energy Authority, according to the email we received from Mr. Brown, uh, they estimated that the, the value per kilowatt month, they anticipate that cost being over $7. And the way I read this is the, the contract locks in the rates less than $7 and it actually decreases as we get more and more into this.
Right.
And there, but I wanted to be clear as far as, this is my question, that it's five years and we have an option for, we, we, the city has the choice of doing a sixth year at a price even less than year five, correct?
That is incorrect.
That is incorrect.
So the, the, uh, the six-year option is at their option. We tried to get it our option, but the way they worded it and they would not give it is our option because, to your exact point, they're not, they're not sure enough and that far out if the capacity market's going to come down. So that tells me they, they're pretty positive that it will go up.
Well, I was surprised to read because it does say at our option in this email. So that's, thanks for that clarification. And.
Can I ask Corporation Counsel real quick? Do you remember seeing it in the, in the agreement? The way we first read it was, we read it as our option, but they clarified it as their option. So we might have missed that in the ordinance.
And, and the reason for that is very quickly is, um, there was a discussion with them via T. T has, T has handled the, you know, interactions with them. And the discussion was if we went out a different, an additional year, would they lower the price in those out years? They lowered the three years from, I think, 375 or 385 down to 365.
Right.
And then however, they would not, would not agree to give the option for the sixth year to the city, they wanted the option.
Correct.
So that's how that, uh, transpired. And obviously, if the price is higher, they're not going to let us buy at a lower number. So I think that, um, they basically have given a, a price discount for the middle three or the last three years, I think it's three, four and five.
Years, three, four and five.
And the sixth year, it's a fixed price at a lower rate, but it's at their option. So, uh, that's the best that was available under the circumstances and it gets the out-of-pocket cost for those last three years lower.
No.
And that 20 cents is a lot of money each year, believe it or not, under these kind of numbers, it adds up very quickly.
Yes.
Well, thanks for that clarification. And, uh, is it safe to say that if we had the older coal units still running, we wouldn't be having this conversation regarding this contract?
Depending on the accreditation, as I said, it all changed. So one of the changes that MISO made in the capacity construct was there's tier one and tier two capacity in each season now. So the, for example, December 22nd, I think it was, when we had that bitter cold, that's going to be the peak for the winter season for that day. So depending on the units operating that day is one part of the capacity accreditation that they give for each unit. The other part of it is the average over the season. So potentially, yes.
A less efficient, a less efficient unit would not get as much credit.
No, no, I get it.
A unit that wasn't running.
And that's where I was going with this. You know, the argument that we hear when we're out and about is, oh my gosh, if you had this, these, uh, the older coal units working, you wouldn't need this and you wouldn't be spending this money. But, but the point is, though, and you correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding was that those units were losing money.
They were.
Those units were inefficient. They had, uh, a tremendous amount of environmental, uh, I'll say strings attached to them.
And.
And this is, as Alderman Redpath pointed out earlier, we're in a, we're in a new, we're in a new world of, uh, of power generation and this is what we need to do for the betterment of the city and it locks in the rates and it actually decreases over the five years, which is a good thing.
Correct. And, and if you remember when we put forward the IRP, October of '23 was the last these units could run anyway because of environmental regulations.
Right. Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the ordinance, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
Alderman Fulginsy, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the ordinance passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is 2023 dash 125, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of new SCBA packs from Municipal Emergency Services, Inc. for an amount not to exceed $68,560 for the Springfield Police Department for emergency passage. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2023 dash 125 on final passage.
So move.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? Alderman Redpath?
So does this bring us up to a complete replacement of our old packs? Or, or where does it put us?
So these air packs are budgeted for this year. Um, half of, item 125, uh, gets us eight more harnesses, which outfits two rigs. And the other one is for the hazmat team and that gets us six more harnesses and, and bottles to go with. With these orders of the rigs are more packs and bottles. Um, so it is, we are putting ourselves in the right direction to replace the entire, um, you know, inventory of bottles.
So where does it leave us?
I don't know the exact number. Um, again, because as the rigs come in, that'll tick our number up. Um, and, you know, I'm not the one who put this bid together, unfortunately, so I'm not sure the exact numbers, but we are supposed to be, uh, in a good position moving forward with this.
Could you, uh, could you figure that out for us and bring that back to us sometime?
Yeah, you can get, I, I, are you okay with an email this week?
Yes, absolutely.
With the exact thing? Yeah. But, uh, I know we had put in for a grant for a big replacement and we still have never heard back on that.
Where did, where does that grant go?
The, uh, the federal.
Okay.
It's a FEMA grant. Um, we keep hearing that those awards have, still have not been, uh, placed, uh, you know, dolled out to departments and those are two years back.
So is the grant to cover the remaining, uh, packs that we need?
Yeah, yeah.
And what cost would that be maybe?
I, I, I'm not even going to guess on the dollar amount. Sorry.
Give me some more information.
Yep.
Please, thank you.
Sure. Any other?
Thanks, Ed.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the ordinance, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
Alderman Fulginsy, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the ordinance passes 11, voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is 2023 dash 126, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of new SCBA packs from Municipal Emergency Services, Inc. for an amount not to exceed $64,171 for the Springfield Fire Department for emergency passage. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2023 dash 126 on final passage.
So move.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
Alderman Fulginsy, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the ordinance passes 11, voting yes, none voting no. Chair will entertain a motion to spend with the rules and place on first reading agenda number 2023 dash 129, an ordinance approving a three-way stop intersection at Lehigh Valley Drive and Brentwood Drive.
So move.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place on, to spend the rules and place on first reading agenda number 2023 dash 130, an ordinance amending ordinance number 275 dash 06 dash 22 by authorizing an additional $8,985 for a total amount not to exceed $26,985 for Central Lodge Number Three, free and accepted masons in a total amount not to exceed $631,704 for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
So move.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. I think I did. Is there any unfinished business come before the council?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Corporation Counsel. I noticed that a few ordinances have came forward on first reading, but I was wanting to check into where my resolution is on the cannabis setbacks to see how do you?
We, we have the, we have the draft done and I'll send it over to you to look at.
Okay.
And it should be, I mean, it should be available for the next meeting.
Okay. And then just for the future, how do you determine or what is the process when we send that in to you to say when is it going to come forward or how does that work? Cause I was just noticing how some of these I thought came before mine and it's been.
It depends on when the paperwork flows through and how the requests come.
Okay.
Cause mo, most of the, most of the ordinances we do are always, 99% just come from the departments.
Okay.
We just get a, a stack of documents and they'll ask for an ordinance. So that, it, it's a, typically, there's no, uh, there's really not a policy where we try to go and, and sort through them. It's really as they arrive through.
Okay.
And also the, uh, what it involves, things like that.
Well, I am glad to hear that it'll be on first reading.
The issue with the setbacks and that sort of thing is that is very complicated. And so we do have the draft done, but it involves multiple areas of that cannabis issue.
Understandable.
Yeah. But we do have the draft done and I'll circulate it to you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Alderman McMinima?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to, uh, go back to, um, two weeks ago when we had a request for reconsideration. I think it's best for the city council, uh, to, generally speaking, always accept the request for reconsideration. Why? Because it shows that we're open-minded. Now, two weeks ago, we had a request for reconsideration and we had a very significant property owner and manager in, uh, here that wanted to talk with us, Mr. Myers. We had a very respected, uh, architect, Dave Leonati, here to speak. And so it, what does it hurt to hear them first and just, you know, say, okay, we want to reconsider this, that means we're just open-minded, we want to hear what they have to say. After we hear what they say, we can then vote no, you know, after listening to them. But when we come here and we say, no, we, we don't even want to consider a request for reconsideration, we're kind of saying, we don't want to hear you, we don't care what you have to say. Bear in mind that we had a situation with that, um, historic building downtown that, uh, we got incorrect information from Horseman, uh, the first night they came. They said it wasn't within the historic district, we know about that. They said it was not a contributing structure, they were wrong about that. And then the third thing they said to us was, um, there's no viable alternative, basically. But basically, uh, actually what we heard after we denied the request for reconsideration, we did hear a viable alternative from them. And if you remember, this whole, uh, situation got started when the que, the legal question was, under the laws of the state of Illinois, are we allowed to spend TIF money to demolish a historic structure? And, uh, and, and the, the answer is no, um, um, i- if there's a viable alternative. And that night, we, we did hear a viable alternative, in my opinion. And so, uh, I don't know if we're going to have a lawsuit on our hands or not. And so I don't know if we're going to have a lawsuit on our hands or not. But that's why it's really important, when we've got something like that before us, we ought to listen carefully to avoid litigation down the road. So my advice, especially, you know, to appointed aldermen, they're here, and women, they're here. You know, it's safer to vote yes for a request for reconsideration. Thank you.
Alderman Gregory?
I would, I would just, you know, on that particular, hopefully, we don't get into any losses, and they take that money and they fix the building that they're crying about. But that's just my take on it. But, but as far as the cannabis resolution, you know, I'm, you know, me, me and Alderman Purchase had a conversation about that. And, and while I do think there are some adjustments that need to be made, I think that we did send it over to regional, the people to get a recommendation. And, 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 you know, when I spoke on it in February, I was clear. I, I, I think changing the boundaries, we'll all have a thousand ideas on it. But I do think the proper way to do it is by just allowing a variance and taking them case by case. And, and, and I will support that with you. But if you want to adjust the boundaries and, and do all of this, I'm with that as well. But I think for the sake of, of, of the community and, and, and the differences in them and the people that will be coming forth to us, trying to, trying to get different buildings throughout our city, I think we take them by case-by-case basis. Because even when we readjust the boundaries, there's going to let somebody come up this, this short or this short. So I think allowing just a variance is the proper way to go. Thank you.
I, I was going to say, the, the language, the draft language does allow for that. It does change to allow, you may recall, not to get too deep into this, but that was discussed, I think, a couple of times by the council originally, whether or not to allow variances. So the draft that's been prepared allows for a variance.
Right.
For you to, and of course, then if it's passed here, then it has to go to the, you know, to the board, then they have to come back. So you'll get it two or three times to talk about it.
All right, thank you, sir.
I think too, Alderman Gregory, we in a good space too for good conversation. And I think this is a great, like, common sense solution that we bring forward that I feel all of our colleagues will be happy with.
Alderman Donlin?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Alderwoman Purchase, Alderwoman D'Senzo, Alderwoman Conley. I know you don't need me to say this tonight. You're all three extremely strong women, capable women, able to stick up for yourself and fight for yourself, fight for your wards. But I've noticed something going on in this chamber for quite some time that's been under my skin. And maybe it's coincidence, maybe it's not. But when any of you three speak about certain issues, there are individuals in this room who roll their eyes. They're individuals, I, I heard the word hypocrite mumbled a couple of weeks ago. And not to be preachy, because it's not my style, but that doesn't have a place here. I hope that we have the utmost decorum in the future, and we can all respect each other's opinions. We're not always going to agree, believe it or not, but we try to work together and do what's in the best interest of the city, and that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very apropos for Women's History Month. Thank you, Alderman. And I thought that was about what he was about to wish.
I know. Well, and I would, and I would like to point out that many moons ago now, it seems, that Alderman Gregory did say the same thing a few years ago, because he felt the same way. So, thank you. We, we appreciate your support.
Is there any new business come before the council?
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Alderman Gregory?
Because I'm going to speak twice. So what, so what are we, what are we talking about here? You, you saying I've said something to offend one of you?
Oh, no. I said you spoke out in support of what Alderman Donlin just said. You said it. You're, you're...
We're agreeing.
You're a trailblazer.
I just want to say, I just want to say, any conversations up there.
I was complimenting you.
All right. Well, thank you. Because I'm trying to keep it clean, but I will say, I will, I will say this though, right? We have some battle, some heated conversations here. And, 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 you know, back in the day, me and, me and Alderwoman D'Senzo have, have had our spats. But I can tell you, I've talked to her more than anybody on this council by phone and things like that, against all of that. So it is what it is. We get heated and, you know, things are said. And I agree, we always try to, should be, try to be respectful. I'll say this, when, when, when I was in trouble, it was Ralph hobbling over with his bad foot to, to check on me. So, you know, and, and we just had a heated this conversation two weeks before. So it is what it is. And, you know, we're just going to keep doing the best for the city and, and move on. Thank you.
Alderwoman Conley?
Thank you, Mayor. Kind of a different topic, but the same topic. Speaking of strong women and leaders in our community, Mayor, I am getting together some language for you. I'd like to get a resolution to recognize the outstanding achievements of Reverend Margaret Ann Jessup, who of Douglas Avenue Methodist Church, who was recently recognized as Illinois Woman of the Year for 2023. The work she does at Wouldn't It Be Lovely, and then with, with all the little things that go on at Douglas Avenue Methodist Church is... She's one of those very quiet, strong people in our community who give back all the time. And Mr. Steve Speer is here. I'm going to give you a shout out for the article. And I believe that was part of the whole getting her nominated. It's, it's thrilling to see someone who does, you know, I, when I congratulated her, she said, well, it's, it's not a big deal. It is a big deal, because the work she does literally touches generations of lives. And so I, Mayor, I've got some information for you so we can get a resolution and actually bring her in here. But I would just like to publicly tonight, again, congratulate her, congratulate the work that she does, that all the women and, and the supporters behind, behind what she does and with, behind Wouldn't It Be Lovely. And I'm just going to minor brag on the really cute trunk I got at the furniture sale this past weekend, so. But again, you know, the, the electronic billboard company agreed to help advertise their billboards. It's, this is the way our community kind of works together in small ways, but she definitely, her small ways make a huge impact. And so congratulations to our Woman of the Year again.
No doubt about it.
Because I, she's awesome.
Thank you for giving her her flowers. We don't do that enough.
She, they do amazing work over there. They do. Love them.
Alderman McMinim?
I punched it twice. You know, we all need to, I'm not going to take offense that Chuck Redpath likes to walk out when I begin talking. It's not, it's not against the Irish, right?
Hey, I got a sixty-six-year-old prostate, buddy. I got to go all the time.
That's what I mean.
AMI. We know what's going on.
I've been thinking for a half second, you guys.
There are perfect other explanations for everything we do, so thank you for that point. I, I'm going to close it there.
Is there anybody signed up to speak?
There is. Janice Smith?
Yes, Janice Smith. I live at 401 East Harrison, apartment on eleven. My church having, so my church in Asherham, they're concert this Saturday. Of course, open at five. Concert starts at six. Everybody's invited. And there'll be three groups that'll be in concert. It's free.
Great.
Like to see you there.
Thank you.
Mayor, I got a question. When we supposed to pay the parking meters downtown, I would like to know.
Yeah, there's still free parking. You have to just abide by the timeframe. So thirty-minute meters, I think those are yellow. And then the blue ones are for, I believe, an hour.
Yeah, because another one we was to pay again.
Yeah, that, we haven't made that determination yet. We're working with Downtown Springfield, Inc. And really, I think what's going to drive it is when the state goes back to work. It's all about moving traffic. Right now, there's not the need that there once was.
Yeah. My home car ain't wants to know. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then this Saturday, I think Coral's having their annual dinner or gala on Saturday.
I believe that's sold out, too.
Yes. It's sold out. It's sold out.
Sold out.
Power paper pool.
Alderwoman Purchase?
Thank you, Mayor. I have one more announcement. We are excited to have our grand opening for Medics First that's located on North Grand, and that is March twenty-third, this Thursday, at four P.M. And the ribbon cutting will be at four twenty, and then followed by the chamber on the tap at four thirty. And we'll also be having the Illinois State Nursing Program grand opening coming soon. And they are just a partner to Medics First in that old shopping safe building.
Illinois State?
Yes.
Any other announcements or business? Is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. There's going to be some good food there.